Directors are here with Director Williams absent. And if you would all please join me in a salute to the flag of the greatest country in the world. So please join me, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Chaplain Lewis, would you please... ...invite us into location?
Please, let's bow our three together. Father in heaven, we are grateful to be able to come and present ourselves to you again. We thank you for this opportunity to pray and to meet together and iron out some of the issues that are so important to this community, this department, to each individual. We understand, Lord, there are a lot of chaos going on in our lives and our world. But you specialize in stopping things that get out of control. If we just bring our burdens to you and allow you to work them out through us, help us stay engaged and stay involved. The psalmists remind us that we may endure for a night, but joy comes in the morning. It'd be great if it came tomorrow morning, but probably not. You want us to learn from the things we have to go through. Sometimes the difficulty, the level of difficulties allow us to grow more. So please, help us remember that whatever we're doing, wherever we're going, and whatever the plans are, you need to be in the mix of them all. And we trust that you will, God. Give us your grace and strength. Touch our hearts and help us lift our spirits to one another and realize that we all are brothers and sisters in your name. In Jesus we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please be seated. I'd like to ask everybody to please silence your cellphones. And with that...
Assessment hearing. Resolution number 201914, confirmation and recovery of costs for weed abatement services. Purposes for the board of directors to review, approve, and adopt resolution number 201914, allowing the fire district to recover costs for weed abatement services for fall 2017, spring 2018, cycles one and two, fall 2018, and spring 2019. Report by Fire Marshal Danielle Barnes.
President DeMonaco, members of the board. The fire district has concluded the bulk of abatement on properties declared for weed abatement. Attached are the cost reports for all parcels that required our office to perform abatement on them. All properties have been invoiced and as of the date of this meeting's agenda, have not paid the incurred fees. The fees are for our administrative costs, as outlined in our fee ordinance, and the actual costs by abatement by our contractors. The health and safety code and resolution 2019-14 require us to post the cost report and hold an assessment hearing prior to submitting any unpaid fees to the county assessor's office. The cost reports are attached and were posted in front of our building as of Friday, July 26. No later than August 9th, resolution 201914 will be forwarded to the county assessor's office so that all costs may be placed on this year's tax roll. It is recommended that the board of directors review, approve, and adopt resolution 2019-14.
Thank you. Let the record show, Director Williams showed up at 5:34. Okay, at this time, I'm going to open the assessment hearing. And I'm going to call and receive public comment... Wait, sorry. Is going to board?
Oh, we have one request to speak.
Right, now we got someone who requests public comment.
Yes.
Yes, okay. At this time, I'm going to call for and receive public comment. And I have one request to speak from Mr. Wang. Please come to the podium.
Hey,大家好. 我现在有两个问题就想咨询一下.
你还是一下下，你不可能讲一段，没有办法.
So I just asked him to slow down so I can translate. He said, "Good evening," and he had a couple questions regarding our weed abatement process. So basically, he's just going through the process. We started our first inspection in March, and then we sent out notices regarding the status of the weed abatement inspection, whether it's compliant or noncompliant. So in May, we went out again for a reinspection, and we sent out a second notice.
第二个也没有收到第二份通知，
So he's stating the previous property owner did not receive the first nor the second notice from us. So he purchased the property and escrow closed in May, and nobody was notified, and they didn't get any notification from the fire district.
根据你们的消防局的一个规定， 你们目前是在检查的时候，
So he did a research from the fire district's website. Basically, it stated all the violation that exist on the property is handled by whoever the property owner was. So he's actually the new property owner, and everything occurred under the old property owner's timeframe.
所以目前我与消防局的沟通的一个结果是，
你说前物主收到了三月十五号.
没有收到.
所以说谁也没有收到任何东西吗?
Okay, so he's saying that nobody really received any notification from the fire district, and so in his opinion, all the penalty, all the violation citations should go to the old property owner. So he's stating that there is a system error within the fire district, and he felt that he should not be responsible for the penalty.
嗯，这是第一个问题，我下面谈第二个问题.
So that was the concern number one, and he's going to state concern number two. Um, he's referring to the contractors that we utilize to abate the weeds. According to our website, he stated that we're not supposed to appoint any contractor to do the work for us. Based on the meeting with the fire marshal earlier in the week or last week, um, he's, he understands that we go through a bid process. In his opinion, the market price that our contractor has is 20 times higher than everybody else.
我目前所问到的，嗯...
So he's actually done a survey between Chino, Chino Hills, Pomona, and Ontario. He's looked for six different contractors.
而且都在家庭办公，
So all these six contractors are all independent contractors, small business, and they all work from their home? So their price, it's $60 a month, and they would come to the residents and do their lawn service twice a month. And so our contractor is, it's way much higher, and you do the math.
所以我有一个疑问，
So he does have a question. He mentioned that he had email conversation with Chief Jacoford, and Chief Jacoford advised him that, you know, we do go through the bid process. So he's asking, what standard do you use? Do you use the highest bid, or do you have a different standard that made you choose this particular contractor?
一旦有风的时候，它会随时会发生火灾，
So in his opinion, he's very unsatisfied with the quality of work by the contractor. There are still dead weeds that's being cut, but it's laying on the ground, and there's still dead tree branches. In his opinion, this is far more dangerous than the weed, the standing weeds, because if the wind blows, it could carry dry brushes and leaves could just fly anywhere, and in his opinion, it's more dangerous. He's asking the fire district to look into, to have a better quality control, quality control of the contractors to ensure the safety of the residents and to better serve the whole purpose of weed abatement. That was the two questions and concerns that he had, and he's finished.
Thank you.
谢谢.
Thank you, Ms. Wang. And before we move forward, I'd like to ask, are there any other requests to speak? Okay, with that, I'm going to bring that back to the board, and I'd like to ask the staff to address the questions.
As Lita provided through the translation force, I did have some email correspondence with the gentleman. And I'll defer the bulk of the report to our fire marshal. My reply to him, my suggestion was to address it to the previous owner and the escrow company. And I'll let the fire marshal provide some more detail on the interaction that they've had and the facts behind the situation.
So if you wouldn't mind, I'd actually like to just go through a timeline of our actual weed abatement process. So Mr. Wang did point out our initial inspection. So we start our initial inspections on March 25th of this year. It was presented to the board at the April 10th board meeting where those properties were declared. There was roughly 1,498 private properties and an additional almost 200 public properties that were declared for weed abatement. Since we were using our administrative citation program to collect on the penalty as the arm for enforcement, a tool, our administrative ordinance requires that we send a certified letter as well as first class. So all of those notifications went out on May, yes, May 13th. On May 14th, Inspector Kitevaz posted the property because the first-class letter to the previous property owner did not come back, but we did receive the certified letter back. So in accordance with our procedure, if we do receive a notice back, we physically go out and post the property with the notice to destroy. So that's document number one that you have in your packet. So it gets placed on a stake and placed in the front yard. On May 15th was the deadline for compliance, so all properties that received the notice were re-inspected. That property was not in compliance at the May 15th deadline, so the property owner at that time did receive an administrative site, which was also mailed to them. That's document two that you have, and it was sent again, first-class mail and certified mail. We still, so the certified mail has not been delivered, it's still showing in transit, so more than likely, the property owner won't pick it up. But the first-class mailing for that has not come back. On June 1st, work orders were submitted to our primary contractor, and there was 93 parcels. On the 26th of June, the remaining parcels that were still outstanding in the city of Chino were reassigned to our secondary contractor, which was Land Pro. Land Pro was out there on the property on July 2nd to abate the property, and that work order is document number three in your packet. So part of the process of streamlining it is actually DFM created a great work order for our contractors to streamline it, so they are to account for their time and manpower on the site, and then as part of our requirements in the contract, they're to provide before and after pictures of the abatement, which is also attached to that document, and that's document number three. Invoices were mailed out on July 17th, and so that's what really prompted Mr. Wang to reach out to us. So the invoice for the property is document number four in your packet. So that's when we first learned that there was a change in ownership. So historically, what we do is when we receive the import back from our consultant that we use for our software, and we do verify if there's any changes because our process within our enterprise system for billing requires that they have a unique customer ID. So she gets that information, she verifies it, and if there are new parcels, she goes into PIMS again, the county assessors, and confirms who owns the property. So that was the first time we found out that there was a property owner change. On the 23rd, Mr. Wang came into our office and met with Inspector Lynn and Kitevaz, spent an hour with them discussing the weed abatement process, and then that subsequently followed up, was followed up by an email to, I believe, Director DeMonaco and Vice President Luth in regards to some questions. So our office had reached out to him, and myself and Inspector Lynn had met with him on the 24th, which was last Wednesday, to address some of those concerns. We did sit down and explain the bid process in regards to our contractors, advise them that it goes through, obviously, the bid process, there's, our contractors have to pay prevailing wage. He was afforded the opportunity to take a copy of the work order that was presented that shows the hourly rate of $38 per hour. He did not want that, he did request a couple documents, and he's been provided those. And then he did show us the pictures in regards to what he feels is the unsatisfactory work of our contractor. So that's document number six. He had emailed those to Inspector Lynn, and those were printed. And then later that afternoon, I actually went out to the property myself, and the pictures that I took is document number seven. So I obviously didn't step foot onto the property, all of mine are taken from the public way. So I did look because I had a concern in regards to his concern about the satisfactory work of our contractor. You clearly do see that there is a dead tree that is actually on the north side of the property and on the palm tree that resides to the back of the property, which is the west side. So our contractor actually cannot abate those because the original notice to destroy specifically calls out all weeds. So that's why our contractor did not abate that. So based on what I had seen in regards to the before and after pictures, I felt that our contractor did do a satisfactory job in regards to abating the weeds. And we typically do not remove dead leaves and so forth. And we pretty much cut down the weeds, and as far as the quality control part of our process is, that once we do receive the work orders, it is part of community risk reductions process to go back up and follow up because we don't pay our contractors until that work is verified.
Thank you. I'd like to bring, ask any board comments or questions?
I do have some questions.
The question I have is, you said the trees, can't do anything with the trees, is that correct?
So on this particular property, we could not because we did not identify that in the original notice to destroy.
Okay, but had you initially identified them, then they could go ahead and trim the trees and stuff also?
Correct. So on the notice to destroy, document one, there's the hazard and location, and so that's where it would be found.
Okay, that's what I was just curious about. So the trees can, you can have the trees trimmed, but it has to be documented and so on?
Correct.
And you felt that these weren't a hazard at the time that you inspected them, or that they were inspected or whatever? Is that correct?
So...
Whoever inspected it?
So on the day of the initial inspection in March, it may have just not been seen. I mean, we don't typically drive to the rear of every property. So from where we conducted that initial inspection, it was not a part of that, I guess, identification of it.
Thank you. That's all.
So me, just on the timeline here, Mr. Wang, Mr. Wang in particular was not notified of the weed abatement issue the previous owner was?
Correct.
So he had no notice, all he got was the bill in the mail?
Correct.
Okay, so it's an unfortunate timing of events here.
Could I provide a little more detail, and I think the fire marshal could provide some dates? So at the point he took ownership, that was prior to the abatement being done, and then the property was posted with the stake and the notice, when he was the actual rightful owner of the property and had transitioned through escrow. We didn't have that information on file at that point, there's a lag with the
Sure.
assessor's office providing that information back to us, but he was the rightful owner, it was posted.
And it was posted.
And it was posted.
Okay.
And our fire marshal can provide a little more detail if you'd like on that.
Can you provide the date once again as to the postings, please?
So when we received, we received the certified mail, the notice back from the initial notification to the property owner, and we received that back in our office on, sorry, I think it was the 14th. I'm sorry, the 13th is when we received the certified mail back, and so our inspector was out there on May 14th.
Okay.
And it was posted. And also, there's, I'm sorry, there's verbiage in our notice to destroy that does go out and that was posted on the property that does advise the property owner that if you're in the transition of sale, like, we're encouraging you to pass this information on. It is my understanding that this property has had an open code enforcement case against it, and the palm tree was one of those issues, and that was all disclosed as part of that. Correct.
Sarah, you were going to do that.
Thank you. Okay, so, so we did post it, it was posted on the property, we've sent several mailings. I'm just looking for my notes. Our opportunity, if you will, to put a lien or whatever the legal term is, is on the property. It's not on a person or a previous owner or a current owner, it's on the property, is that correct?
Correct, we're only allowed to put it on the parcel itself.
Okay. So our, so we're focused on the property. Who the owner is, as it transitions, we obviously can't control that.
Correct.
And we necessarily don't always know if something's changing. It just seems to me this is an issue that needs to go back to the previous owner by the current owner, not, not the fire district. Regarding our contractors, so we solicit bids, as I recall. We had a certain number of bids, I don't know, four to six, it seems, as I recall. We have standards, if you will, in terms of if you gotta offer prevailing wage, are they required to be bonded or licensed in any certain way so there's added cost there, okay.
Have to provide insurance?
Right, oh, yeah, yeah.
Or car, all that stuff.
Right. Okay.
And prevailing wage.
Prevailing wage is the big deal.
Yep.
Comment I've got is that our bids go out according to state law. State law dictates how our bids go out and require us to pay prevailing wage and have all these other requirements in there. So we can't just go out and pick the cheapest person we can find. State law does not let us do that. But I got a question. It was posted on May 14th. When did escrow close?
Document number, I believe it's number five, was pulled in preparation for the meeting we had with Mr. Wang, so that the acquisition date was on the 22nd of May.
Okay.
And then in our meeting with him, he advised us that he did not receive the keys to his property until, I think it was the 3rd of June.
Then my question, I want to ask Isaac. Isaac, because the former property owner or the person that owned the property at the time of the posting would be liable for the weed abatement, wouldn't his argument, his, and where he should go would be after the escrow company or the realtor or the former property owner, wouldn't his argument be with them and not us because they did not abide by the weed abatement, and they let that property transfer over into his name after, at a later date?
I'm not sure whether, under state law, there's an obligation, I don't know, is the short answer, whether there's an obligation that during the transfer of the sale, there would have been a required notice the way there would have been with a lien, for instance. So I'm not sure whether or not, under state law, as part of the escrow, that...
And I guess I'm also asking, and even for disclosure, for requirements, and I would think that's where he should go to seek remedy.
Well, I know the district has followed the notice requirements set out in the health and safety code and has discussed that with district council's office a number of times in terms of ensuring that pursuant to the weed abatement procedure that we follow under state law, which is the same that a county would do, that the notice requirements are set forth in terms of the mailing and then the subsequent posting on the property.
Okay, thank you. Any other board comments?
I just, I feel bad for the situation, but it was posted before he took... It was posted before he took ownership. So once he took ownership, it was posted, and...
Was posted after the ownership change or before?
It was posted prior. And, you know, if he's seeking remedy on this, I think he needs to go back to the escrow company or to the previous owner civilly.
I do too.
I have a question. This is of Mr. Wang. Mr. Wang did not see the posting, so he did not visit the property while it was posted, is that correct?
That's correct.
我不是物主，但是...
So, no, he did not see it, and he wants to emphasize that he was not the owner of that property. And also, he brought copies from, I guess that's our website, and it clearly stated the legal owner of... and it clearly stated the legal owner of, uh, the record is, at the time of the property is responsible for the charges.
Right, so that, uh, that pretty much goes along with what the other board members were saying, and that, that is where he would have to go or take care of the problem is for the previous owner. So if you could, you know, state that to him. The other question that I do have is, this is Mr. Wang, is that correct? And also, it, was Mr. Wang, uh, at all knowledgeable, or did he have any knowledge of the fact that, uh, the weed abatement situation and how it's handled at all in regards to the community, or that there might be a problem at all, even though he didn't see the posting or anything?
那我想不知道，现在知道了。
No, he wasn't aware before and he knows it now.
Yeah, so, yeah, the, what, I, I. Just thinking about it, and the question was actually is, he was totally ignorant of the fact that weed abatement is a part of our process in the community and so on, is that correct?
He has one more question?
Oh, he has one more?
Yes.
One more question? Okay, one more question, we'll go ahead and allow it.
I.
So his question was that, when we realized that there is a ownership change on the property, um, how come he received the invoice but yet not the notice, not a courtesy notice to destroy weed?
Because the notices went out before he took ownership. Right?
So we didn't realize that there was an ownership change until after the abatement had been performed. So abatement was performed on July second by our contractor, and we don't, um, prepare the invoicing until we receive the work orders back from our contractor, and we received that back, um, I believe it was on the sixteenth of July, and the invoices were mailed out on the seventeenth. So, and, um, the assessor's office does not provide any means except for an address. There's no telephone number or anything like that, so we would have just sent a letter, and that's not historically what we do.
Let me just explain that to you. 那那个时候已经是七月份了，那已经是五月份了。
So he's going, he's referring back to our, uh, website. Um, it's the owner of the property at that time is responsible. Um, it's, it's just a bad timing.
And that's, and that's what we said, that his recourse should be against the former property owner or the escrow company or whoever, uh, that would be his recourse, not, not us.
I'll explain that.
Okay, thank you.
这个不是我的问题。
One la- one last comment.
He's giving a hypothetical, um, example, like, if somebody kills somebody with a knife and ran away, and he happened to pick up the knife, does that make him a murderer?
Okay, uh, okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Wang, and, uh, now what I'm, I'm going to close the assessment hearing and, uh, I'm going to call for a motion. And do we want to read the recommendation first, and then?
Thank you.
Please.
It is recommended that the Board of Directors review, approve, and adopt Resolution Number two thousand nineteen fourteen.
Okay, this time I'd like to call for a motion.
So moved.
Go ahead, sorry, sir.
So moved.
Got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimous.
Public Communications, this is a time and place for the general public to address the Board of Directors about subjects that do not appear elsewhere on the agenda. The public may address item, the public may address items on the agenda at the time addressed by the board. Due to board policy and Brown Act requirements, action may not be taken on any issue not on the agenda. When you address the board, please come up to the podium, state your name and address prior to making your remarks. Please limit your comments to five minutes. Do we have any requests to speak? Okay, see none, oh, business, none, new business, none.
Fire Chief's comments?
Just two brief comments for this evening, uh, just like to express my gratitude to our community risk reduction staff for their efforts with weed abatement. Uh, our fire marshal and deputy fire marshal lot for heading that up, it's a very challenging program to manage, we do appreciate your efforts there. And then also just a brief comment, uh, to our suppression staff for a job well done on the grass fire and structure fire incident on Sunday, and I'll have a little more information at the upcoming board meeting in August on that for the board. That concludes my comments for this evening.
Thank you, Board Committee reports, board comments, Mr. Williams.
Uh, I'd just like to thank our interpreter, I think she did an excellent job, and thank you very much. I would like to say that I'm very sorry to Mr. Wang for the situation that, that came about, these types of things do come up and, there's really nothing that, that can be done. I've had similar situations come up, and, and that's pretty tough. And the only other thing that I'd like to say is, uh, I still need help with my computer, so if sometime in the future we could maybe arrange that, thank you.
Director Greger?
Lena, as well, uh, thank you for your help tonight, and, uh, I too just want to thank, uh, the crews for all the, all the hard work they're putting in with the weed abatement and with the, the grass fire that happened, uh, recently and how well everybody attacked it. It was unfortunate that the one house got, uh, destroyed, but, uh, but I'm glad it wasn't worse than that, as it very well could have been. And I'll save all comments for the next meeting.
Thank you, Director Reven.
Um, again, thank you, Lena, we appreciate that. I have compassion for Mr. Wang and I wish that there was something to do with this process. Unfortunately, uh, we do have a job to do and we have to abate those weeds, and the incident that we had the other day is just another reason why we have to enforce this and be very strict with this. And, um, I'll leave the rest to my comments, um, thank you everyone's, you know, in, with all the work and the rest of the comments will be said, thank you.
I agree with all the comments, uh, appreciate the effort of staff. This is a challenging role to, uh, to take on for the district, and, uh, I believe we do it as well as can be expected to be done, and you deal with some challenges at times, and, and I appreciate the effort to try and work things out with, uh, with whatever those issues are, and that would be the end of my comments. Thank you, and I concur with the comments, you know, we're darned if we do, darned if we don't with weed abatement, uh, but, as witnessed by the fire we had recently, if, when these things take off and we have a fire and we have a wildland fire, it's, it's a threat to everybody. And hopefully our diligence and weed, weed abatement helps, helps control those losses that are suffered. But my thanks to the crews, to everybody that was on that fire, that was a tremendous stop. You know, we lost a structure, but if you go out there and look at that and look at the other structures around there, uh, that was an incredible threat to a lot of structures. And, uh, and, and that was a tremendous effort on our, our firefighter's part to control the damage and limit it to the damage that was done, it was, uh, it was just a really good job. With that, I do have a, a little statement I want to read, and it goes to what occurred last meeting, and it's really bothered me, and I'm going to read it. And it just says, battery is an intentional unpermitted act. Battery is the right to have one's body left alone by others. Battery is both a tort and a crime. Battery is harmful, harmful or offensive contact. The act of battery is the same in both areas of the law. Touching the person of someone is defined as including not only contact with the body, but also with anything closely connected with the body, such as clothing or an item carried on the body. Battery includes contact that causes no actual physical harm, but is instead offensive or insulting to the victim. This includes touching someone against his or her will. The basic elements of battery are an act by a defendant, an intent to cause harmful or offensive contact on the part of the defendant, and harmful or offensive contact to the plaintiff. In tort law, the intent must either be specific intent, where the contact was specifically intended to, or general intent, where the defendant was substantially certain that the act would cause the contact. At a previous meeting, an, an former employee spoke of an instance where Mr. Williams tried to choke him over an incident of not providing him salt and pepper. Mr. Williams himself spoke of the time when he was employed where management personnel came out to his station to intervene with him because they feared he would go postal, your choice of words. Over the course of the past eight months or so, Mr. Williams has called me every name in the book and has talked to me in very, very in den- in a denigrating manner. He has been extremely nasty to me and rude to me. At our last meeting, Mr. Williams continued his verbal assaults towards me. After the meeting, Mr. Williams came out behind me and put his hand on me and slid his hand up towards my neck, which then I told him to not tou- do not touch me. The act of sliding his hand towards my neck causes me great concern, especially after the report by a previous employee of the act committed to him. This was not an act of friendship. This was an act that was intended to threaten, intimidate, or provoke me. His intentional act of battery upon me meets all aspects of the elements of battery. I have told Mr. Williams in the past not to put his hands on me or to touch me. Mr. Williams, you have no right to place your hands on me. I am telling you right now, do not ever place your hands on me again in any manner. I have filed an incident report with, uh, after your actions last meeting with the San Bernardino County sheriffs. I have not filed charges at this time. I have not decided any direction I may take, including any action of criminal, civil, or both. Mr. Williams does not have the right to touch anyone without your permission. None of us have that right. Somehow he thinks his actions are okay. I would like to have this item placed on the August agenda for board discretion and possible action. So, with that, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn our meeting, and the meeting will be adjourned to a regular meeting of the Board of Directors of the Chino Valley Independent Fire District to be held on Wednesday, August fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen, at six PM at Fire District Headquarters Office, located at four zero one one City Center Drive, Chino Hills, California, nine one seven oh nine, meeting adjourned.